All right, I will call this City Council Listening Session to Order. It is 5:45 on Monday, August 5th, and we will get started here. Like I said earlier, we've got a full group of people who want to talk this evening, so we're going to try and get through as everybody in a rest amount of time. Why don't we start with Kim Floyd, if we could? Come on forward, if you could, sit at the table. And after you get done presenting, then you can sign in while the next speaker is gone. How about that? So, all right, good evening, welcome.
Well, thanks. My name is Kim Floyd, so I'm here kind of on two bases. First off, I'm a resident of Eden Prairie. We do contract with Bloomington for use of your animal shelter. And I'm also here as a foster for Second Chance Animal Rescue. So I have come to your animal shelter on numerous occasions to pick up strays that we have taken into our program. So I'm here, I want to really stress the urgency of improvements that are dire need at that shelter. First off, I want to commend your shelter staff, John and the cadet. They do the best job they can with the resources they have, but they are in need of resources desperately. The last time I was there was two weeks ago. There were so many cats, there were multiple cats crammed into each cage, so very little room because there's lack of cleaning, proper cleaning equipment, lack of laundry, you know, the cats are often on newspaper, which causes skin irritation. The water and the food dishes are so old and dented that really, it causes issue with rust and bacteria than that things can be passed to the animals. So they really need more space and better equipment. That said, also, the staff are very strained, they're stretched very thin. And as I said, they do the absolute best they can with the resources they have, but really need more staffing also, so that animals can get a little bit of a better care. It's very sad sometimes when they're really full to state in the condition of which shows animals are being kept. So, you know, obviously, I'm usually there on behalf of cats, but, you know, I've noticed, you know, dogs too, a lot of them, sometimes because of lack of cleaning equipment and facilities and staff, they're standing in feces and urine for extended periods of time, really kind of disgusting. And they're not getting walked and such, so that they can go outside and potty. The other issue is lack of a vet. It'd be really helpful to have some vetting for some urgent situations. The cat I got two weeks ago, Eden Prairie had brought it, they had found it injured, had taken it to Blue Pearl. So it had a very deep laceration that had been wrapped, but it was sitting in the shelter for 16 days. And by the time we got it and took it to the vet, it had severe bacterial infections and had to do several courses of antibiotics. Luckily, it didn't lose its limb, but it could have been deadly for the animal. So those are just some examples. And I run, I mean, ideally, it would be wonderful to have a new facility, but at the very minimum, you really need to allocate some funds to make improvements and allocate more staff. So I want to thank you for your time.
Good, thank you so much. Council, any questions?
Um, I guess I, so I think we recently allocated one.
We are for this evening.
Mr. Mayor and council members, yeah, thank you for the comments.
Sign in.
We have it on the agenda tonight for the council to transfer $100,000 from the Strategic Priorities Fund into our facilities fund, so we can make some improvements over there. And the list of improvements that staff is currently planning is to install a fenced outdoor dog run and relief area, which will make it easier for our animal control team and for the animals, frankly. Have that right next to the building. Remodel the front desk and the food prep areas, replace the front door, improve lighting in kennel rooms, add functional storage for supplies and donated items, create space for rescue partners and adopters to interact with the animals, and then deep cleaning and a fresh coat of paint. So that's what we can do with $100,000. And at the same time, we're initiating a service assessment of our animal shelter and animal control services. We're actually meeting in just a couple of weeks to scope out what that service assessment looks like. And then we also have an item in our capital improvement plan for $1.6 million for replacement of the existing facility. The exact timing of that will be looked at as a result of the service assessment. So we'll bring all that information back to council at a later date.
Wonderful, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is my first time at one of these. Can I ask questions or is that?
Only because we're tight on time right now. Maybe you could catch us in the hall as we leave here, and we can provide any information that you might need. But I want to make sure, like I said, I mean, I want to make sure everybody who signed up gets an opportunity to speak, so. Pat.
I'm here on behalf of Creekside Seniors. And if you look at the programming, all this programming is, you might as well just throw these away. There's going to be no more free senior programming. So you can check out both sides, and then you can throw it away. Because free senior programming is gone. And I'm here because I find that, I would hope that you would think seniors are valuable enough to invest in programs for your seniors. I'm also here, I want you to take a look at these statistics sheets. There's one right there. Okay. On the new health and wellness center, you'll look at the median household income in Bloomington is $87,000. You will look at the poverty rate is 8%. You will look at the agencies that were used in comparison, and you will notice Egan, $104,000, Eden Prairie, $129,000, Maple Grove, $127,000. Compared to $87,000, you have to understand there's a big difference in the amount of money that people can spend on recreation. And the poverty rate, this is going to be in a subsidized center. And I just, when you are making plans, that 3.5 to 4 million per year will not be covered by expenses. And I hope that you all will think of seniors in low-impact exercise. That means you sit in a room, watch a video and exercise. cribbage, bunco, senior discussion group. I understand already that any kind of fixed room is gone. So that means that your 100 people or 100 votes for the Creekside Boutique, gone. Your 450 people associated with the Jocks Program, gone. The 200 people votes associated with cards, gone. It's more than just, you're losing your senior community. The program in Bloomington, the program in Edina, the program in Eden Prairie, they're all free. What I find very interesting is that Bloomington is subsidizing Richfield and Edina in the Public Health Building. The actual physical structure, we voted on it. It's for Richfield, Bloomington, and Edina. And isn't that interesting that we are helping them with their poor when we can't seem to move forward with our own seniors?
If I could just interject there.
Yes.
Edina and Richfield pay Bloomington to have.
For the services, but not for the structure.
Tax will pay for the structure.
Yeah, yes.
Right. And the local sale tax is only coming probably about 50% from Bloomington, according to our predictions right now.
It's coming all from Bloomington business. So if you bought a car in business, if you bought a car, you went to any of the car dealerships.
Sure, but you could be an Edina resident and do that, is what I was getting at.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is that's a Bloomington business that is paying that.
And we're at four and a half minutes, so why don't we make it very quick?
Yeah, the sales tax is not paid by Bloomington businesses. The sales tax is paid by the consumer who is buying the products. Our estimate of who would be paying sales tax when it was presented for voter approval is that more than 60% of that would be paid by non-Bloomington consumers. And one thing to.
But they would replace.
Vehicle sales tax is not included in the sales tax. So it's the cars, taxes on them aren't actually subject to the local law.
So I'm sorry, Pat, we're at our four and a half minutes.
I'm quick, clarifying.
Very quick.
I don't think anything has been decided.
That is.
So to state if all this is going away would be an inaccurate statement because we haven't made those decisions yet.
You're going to decide it for a fee. If.
That is not.
Not necessarily. Some of these could be relocated to like fair for all. And like, it doesn't, I think you're, I would encourage you to think maybe more expansively about what the discussion is and what's happening right now.
And I believe you, have you had your meeting with Renee and with Ann?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I hope they were able to clarify the cost recovery plan that's in place, the plan to make sure that there are subsidies for people who can't quite afford the different things, and a variety of different mixes of free, but also events or activities that are, that will cost.
No free, I didn't see any free.
Well, we'll see if we can clarify that for you. So, but thank you very much, we've got to move on, Pat, thank you so much.
Remember the median incomes of those ones that purchased those passes.
I think we've got this data, yeah, thank you, Pat.
Thank you. Sally.
I'm talking. Last week, when I read the city code exterior lighting, 1301.07, purpose and intent number six, protect motor vehicle operators, pedestrians and adjacent land uses from glare. I was asked to read it again, and it was inferred that when number six stated protecting motor vehicle operators, pedestrians, were from glare and not to protect motor vehicles and pedestrians from the concerns of an unlocked property. Under C, lighting standards, number nine, defines glare and states glare. In all zoning districts, all lighting must be arranged so as not to shine directly on any adjoining property. A person must not create light that produces glare clearly visible beyond a property line or creates a sensation of brightness within a visual field so as to cause annoyance, discomfort, or impairment of vision. Additionally, as noted in the email from the city manager, 712024, the intent behind the standards is to light areas where pedestrians are likely to be present. The email is stating pedestrians, and not from glare, but to light areas where they may be. Number six is to protect pedestrians, not protect pedestrians from glare. Again, the city code exterior lighting, 2130107, purpose and intent, six, is to protect motor vehicle operators, pedestrians, and adjacent land uses from glare. The purpose and intent of city code 2130107, exterior lighting is to protect vehicles. It is also to protect pedestrians, and it is also to protect adjacent land uses from glare. The question the city council should ask is why the email, when providing the intent of the city code for exterior lighting, did not include protect motor vehicle operators? And why staff is not concerned with following city code and protecting motor vehicle operators? And why the email did not include lighting plan where number four states an accurate site plan indicating the location of property lines and all existing and proposed land improvements, including but not limited to buildings, parking lots, aisles, and driveways, streets, walkways, and accessory buildings? And why the email did not include that the city code states minimum illumination of parking surface of the parking, loading, access, or other surfaced areas along the property line? And if the intent behind the standards is to light areas where pedestrians are likely to be present, whether walking on a sidewalk or walking from a parked car to a building entrance, then why is there no lighting in the areas where pedestrians are likely to be present, such as the sidewalk next to the south entrance on Park Avenue and the sidewalk from the parking lot on Chicago Avenue? Additionally, there's a parking plan that indicates LP or light pole by the Darrell-Furk sign. Why was that not constructed? Questions I would like answered. When staff provided the intent of the city code for exterior lighting, why did staff not include protect motor vehicle operators? Two, why did staff not include the language from city code 2130107, exterior lighting, be lighting plan where number four states an accurate site plan indicating location of property lines and all existing proposed land improvements, including but not limited to buildings, parking lots, aisles, and driveways, streets, walkways, and accessory buildings? Three, why did staff not include city code 2130107, exterior lighting states minimum illumination of parking surface of the parking, loading, access, or other surfaced areas along the property line? Four, why is there no lighting in areas where pedestrians are likely to be present, such as the sidewalk next to the south entrance on Park Avenue and the sidewalk from Park Avenue, the parking lot on Chicago Avenue? Additionally, there is a parking plan that indicates LP or light pole by the Darrell-Furk sign. Why was that not constructed?
Council, any questions? And thank you, Sally. Sheila.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight and giving me a chance to speak. And I'm sorry that every time I come here, it seems to be something ugly. I don't mean it to be that way, but I just really want you guys to know what my life has been like this past year with the Bloomington police. I am here today to talk about the continued harassment by the Bloomington police. It all began shortly after the raid at my house for my son for probation violation warrant. I was followed for several blocks. Once I exited 494 in Lyndale, a police officer got behind me and followed me, and he turned his lights on, and I knew I had done nothing wrong. So I reached for my phone to record me getting pulled over. I began to pull to the side of the road. I raised up my phone to record. Just then, he turned off his lights, and he drove slowly around me. Lyndale is a two-lane road, so the officer had no reason to light me up because he simply could have went around me. The Bloomington police have went to my daughter's apartment, to my daughter's home in West Bloomington, and went to her third-floor apartment at 10:00 PM at night and knocked on her door. When she opened the door, the officers began to question her without any cause about who all lived here. My daughter asked why, and she wasn't given any reason. She did cooperate. Three weeks later, the same thing happened again. They were clearly harassing her. On another day, she was followed from her West Bloomington apartment to my granddaughter's school, which is about a mile and a half away. When she pulled into the school, the officer lost interest in following her. Yet another day, my daughter was coming to my home in East Bloomington, and she was passed, she was passed an officer on Nicolet. He immediately did a U-turn in the middle of 90th Street and got behind her and followed her to my home on 84th Street in Nicolet. She got into the left-hand lane to turn into my driveway, and then the officer was directly behind her, he stopped with her. She thought she was going to get pulled over, but there was no lights on. After she pulled into my driveway, he drove away slowly. He could have went around her at any time. It was just another intimidation factor. The main incident that I am concerned about is the fact that a Bloomington police officer is now parking in the parking lot where my daughter and I get therapy. It's more than just a coincidence. I know this because my therapist's office window shows the parking lot. I asked my therapist if she had ever seen a police officer outside, and she told me never. She found it highly unusual. I'm in therapy with my young daughter because of the trauma she suffered because of the raid. My daughter's therapist wanted to escort us out to the parking lot. I responded, no, it's fine. I'm not going to let them intimidate me or my family. Bloomington police have followed many of my relatives, including my 75-year-old mother, my 84-year-old father, and my relatives who leave my home after large family gatherings. Lastly, I have spoken with Hodges one day when I encountered him in a parking lot near Penn and American Boulevard, and spoke with him about what's happening to my family. He didn't seem concerned, and instead asked me if my relatives had warrants or no insurance, do they have a driver's license? Which would all result in them being pulled over. They were never pulled over, just followed, stared at with lights on, and other times with them off, all intimidating tactics. I just want this to stop, it needs to stop, it's been a year, this is ridiculous.
As I've said in your previous times you've been here, we have a hard time commenting as a council because this is ongoing. I mean, this is, there are things that are still active, so I don't want to comment in any way. I'll just say thank you for your comments this evening, and I will continue to pass them on to the chief.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And I am going in the neighborhood too, and I'm speaking to a lot of residents on the east side. And I found out that I am not the only one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Ms. Berry, right?
Yes.
If you would like to sit down with the chief, he's more than happy to sit down.
I've been trying to sit down with him for a year, and I wanted to sit down with you too a year ago.
The two of us will sit down with you, let's find time and we'll sit down.
Okay.
Right.
And hopefully, other people will come out too and start talking about what's happening to them on the east side of Bloomington.
Thanks, Sheila. Sharon. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members, for allowing me an opportunity to speak with you tonight. Keep an eye on clock and talk as fast as I can. So I am here as a Bloomington resident, and I would like to address you tonight as a companion animal advocate. And I know a lot of times we tend to come and make comments when we think things aren't going right, or when we have complaints. I am here tonight to make six thank you points. And so again, I have six, so I will try to talk really fast. My first thank you goes to an advocacy group called Friends and Advocates for Pets at Bloomington Animal Control. This is a group that I've been aware of and worked with and supported for years now. They're a volunteer organization, their goal has always been stated to achieve a state-of-the-art Bloomington animal shelter, but they don't stop with that. In the meantime, they do all kinds of great things. Everything from bringing towels and blankets to animal control to help make the pets there more comfortable. But more than that, they do a lot of advocacy, they do a lot of social media posting and networking. They work with rescue groups and adopters. I have seen, even within just the past few weeks, I've seen them reunite pet owners with their pets that are at animal control. And I have seen them cross-post attract rescue organizations and advocacy groups and adopters. And I've seen them literally save the lives of pets. By, once they get past their stray hold, it's often, right now, very, very difficult to attract rescues. They've managed to attract funding to help get rescue organizations lined up, to get animals sprung out of animal control into a rescue organization and into an adoptive home. They do wonderful, wonderful work, so kudos to them. So I just want to make a shout out to them, a completely volunteer organization I have a lot of admiration and respect for. As I mentioned, they work with animal control, which brings me to my next point. Bloomington Animal Control, your animal control officers work hard with conditions that, as I think we will all agree, are not the best right now. And I know that we're working on that, but I want to give a shout out to the animal control officers who have helped me on numerous occasions. Every time I scoop up a stray dog on the street and get ahold of them, they're always very helpful. Last year, when my dog Teddy got bit by a stray dog as we were coming home from Milwaukee and was badly injured, it was thanks to the animal control officer who helped me file a police complaint. I was able to track down the owner of the dog and get reimbursed for a lot of my thousands of dollars' worth of medical bills for my dog. So they were instrumental in that. Together, these two groups do great things. And I think that's the third point I want to make here, is that to me, I think this is one of the best examples of a community advocacy group working with city of Bloomington staff. And the synergy that they create is just wonderful to see, and I'd love to see more of that. That brings me to my next point, the city council. Thank you all for having that $1.6 million line item in the CIP. I am as eager as anyone to see a new animal control facility, and I know we all are. I know it's coming, we can't get fast enough, but we're happy it's coming. My fifth point is I would like to give a shout out to my city council member, Mona DeLisandro, for her advocacy work for the $100,000 budget item that you will be considering later tonight to give some emergency funding to our facility that we have right now to help improve conditions in the meantime, very grateful for that. And six, last but by no means least, I want to thank you and the city of Bloomington for, oh my gosh, I'm going to choke up. When I was a kid growing up in Bloomington, my mom always taught me, whenever you're in trouble, you need help, find a phone and you dial 888-4401. My mom drilled that number into my head, and I've used it a lot of times. And now, here we are, 60 years later. And just two weeks ago, I was driving home, little stray dog, hopped out of my car, corralled the dog, didn't want to be held, struggling to hold on to the dog with one hand, trying to dial my cellphone with my chin, and the only number that I could remember was 888-4401, and it still works. Thank you for doing that after all these years. I know that everyone, you've all, you know, transitioned to the new, your new 564 numbers, but that 888-4401 number still works, and it got me right to dispatch, and somebody came and helped me with that stray dog and kept her safe, which was the whole goal of animal control. I'm a big advocate of, you know, a lot of people say we don't like to use the dog catcher, we don't like to have to send them to the pound. That's the safest place for a stray dog. So thank you for that, thank you for keeping that phone number handy. 888-4401, it's on my brain and it will be forever. So that's all I have to say, thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you.
I got everything.
Thank you.
Don't know you, but I really did.
Robert.
Hi.
How are you?
My name is Robert Coleman. I wanted to know if you guys have had any progress on returning Transit Service to Bloomington? I know that coming up is the Metro Transit Network Now, which is their big redesign of the system. It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be published August 1st, but they delayed it to September 12th. And I was wondering if you guys have had any, have been contacted by Metro Transit? Or have any, know anything or have made any progress on that?
Turn to our.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council members.
I'm not aware of any direct contact between our staff and Metro Transit on this. I do meet tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, with our Met Council representative and our sector rep, that's the staff person who works with this area. So I'll ask them where they're at in their planning process. I haven't seen any drafts of comments coming. Usually, our planning staff are the ones who submit those.
Yeah.
But I will find out tomorrow, Robert, and I'll follow up.
The, I know that that's, some other cities have. I have a friend who works in the planning department of one of the other suburbs, I shouldn't be specific, that he saw briefly the list of the proposed changes. And from what he saw, there are some good things for Bloomington, but it is not returned to 2021 service. It is, I'm very concerned about that. The, I've looked at the, all of the, the community engagement for Network Now, and like, none of the public meetings are anywhere near Bloomington. I was hoping to have an opportunity to speak to the Metro Transit General Manager, Leslie Kanderas. She, over the last year, she's been riding every route. You'll see why in a second. And on the website, it says, ride with Leslie Kanderas. Over the next year, she rides every Metro Transit-operated and branded route. She did not do that, she, in the Star Tribune, they claimed her victory. She put a, you know, a blog post out about how she had ridden all 60 routes. If the reporter had taken a moment to check that number, that's nowhere near all of them. In fact, she only rode the, and so the point was that she talks with people on the bus, and people can come and talk to her, and with the operators and stuff like that. And I was really hoping for that opportunity. Except she didn't come to Bloomington, she didn't ride the 534, the 537, the 538, the 539, the 540, the 542, or the 546. All of the contracted routes that are not technically operated by Metro Transit, but are, but would fit under Metro Transit branded. I don't know why they set that bar if they weren't going to meet that. And I've spoken to, so they're contracted through Metropolitan Transportation Services, which is the Met Council version, where they do like Metro Mobility and stuff like that, and they contract that out. And I spoke to the president of MTS, and he said that Metro Transit still chooses where the routes go and how much service they get, and that Schmieden Sons, who is the contractor. And that Schmieden Sons, who is the contractor, has had a lot of success over the last year, rehiring up, getting new maintenance capacity, uh, and there's the, the contracted capacity, there's the money there and they're just waiting for Metro Transit to say to do it. And it's, it's really frustrating that it, we may not even, even with their long-term plan of Network Now, we may not even see those, the 20, the, the 2021, 2022 service levels return. And I think that, you know, I, I sent an email to the general manager like, hey, when are you going to ride these routes? You know, like subtly trying to say like, hey, I kind of know that you guys lied about it. Um, and I was hoping that you guys could maybe try to invite them, you know, so that you guys ride it at the same time as her and, you know, actually have her come and ride the routes here in Bloomington. Cause it is a glaring omission, either unintentionally or intentionally. I don't know which one's worse. And I've had no success trying to get contact over the last two weeks and I was hoping that you guys would try.
One quick question, then we got to go get downstairs, but thank you.
Um, so I, I don't know if what, uh, I, I guess is for us originally, you know, I don't know what choices we have, but in the same way that we have, uh, priorities that we give to our legislators and everything else, I feel like there's really a, a, a gap in our ability to communicate with Met, with the Metropolitan Council and it has something to do with their like recent changes and everything. I get that. But for them to understand what our priorities really are, um, I, I, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think that we all agree that public transit is an important aspect of, of Bloomington life and we are underserved and for the money that they get from us, like that feels bad. So I'd love for us to figure out how we can do something formally in that way. I don't know if that's us signing a letter, if that's asking them to come to council and present to us. Is it getting a meeting with them where we deliver a priority list very similar to what we do at state legislature time? Or is there, I don't know if there's our lobbying group that works on our behalf in this area, but you know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and you make a good point and I think it's a, it's a good point. And with Jamie talking with their, these folks tomorrow, uh, maybe we try and get them on the, the agenda and come and speak to the council and not just a presentation, but perhaps a little bit of a conversation as well about what we might want to see and what their, what their Network Now next steps might be.
Right. Especially if you think about what we're trying to do for the community center and it's a issue we have with parking. If they can actually help us in a lot of ways with our public transit needs there, we may find a way to solve some of that parking problem without having to build a structure.
Agreed. Agreed. Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Thank you all. We are over time, so I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Let's get downstairs. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm sorry we didn't get to, we had, we had a full house. I don't know if you were hoping to.
It wasn't.
Okay. Sounds good.